I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. If you could all stand, we do have an invocation from Pastor Shane Sevy tonight.
Let's pray. God, we just come to you today, Lord, and we just, uh, we just asked for some wisdom, some knowledge and some courage and some strength, Lord, that only you can give. Lord, I pray that you be with our city officials and our city council and the, our public as they come up and speak, Lord. Just bless this community, bless this time. I pray that you would be glorified, and I pray that, uh, no decision would be made outside of your will. Align us with your will and your direction and lead us and guide us. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Do you go turn face to the flag for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. I would like to note one minor change to the agenda. We've omitted, uh, Deb Tyson as on the agenda. She had requested to speak, so she is going to be speaking prior to the rest of the general public portion. And with that, we'll, we'll pause a little bit and then do roll call of the council members. Go ahead.
Lehman?
Here.
Podak?
Just here.
Cassidy?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Hall?
Here.
Mendoza?
Here.
Lake?
Here.
All right, we're all here. Minutes of the previous meeting.
Move to adopt.
Second.
You have a motion by Lehman, a second by Baker to adopt the previous meeting minutes. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Those do pass. Do you have any communications?
I do not.
Report of the committee's finance committee.
Nothing new to report, but our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February 18th at 5:30 PM in council chambers.
Excuse me, is there a chance that we can reschedule that meeting? I will not be in town that week.
Okay.
We have a...
The Oversight Committee.
The Oversight Commission meeting on the 11th at 10 o'clock. If we could do that prior to that meeting or after that meeting? I don't know if Mr. Podak's available on the 11th at 9:30 or 11:30 works better. But if we could do it?
I'm available the whole day.
It's fine.
So if we could put a public notice out that the next finance committee meeting will be at 9:30 on the 11th of February, and it'll be in the conference room here at the municipal building. Thank you, Ms. Lehman.
So, our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February 11th at 9:30 in the conference room.
Thank you very much. Public Affairs Committee.
Nothing new to report and no scheduled meetings at this time.
And Law and Ordnance Committee.
The Law and Ordnance Committee will meet again on Tuesday, February 18th at 5:15 here in council chambers.
Very much. Move into Report of Officers Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to thank everyone for their cards and their thoughts and prayers. I have a long road ahead of me, but I'm making excellent progress. Second, I'd like to report on the leachate spill at Wind Waste Innovations, which was written up in the paper. As was stated in the article, all of the spill was contained on Wind Waste property. There was no risk to Fosteria's water supply. Wind Waste reached out to the city of Fosteria to ask if we would take the spilled water. After physically examining the spill, we agreed to take the spilled water. This is primarily storm water. There were 50,000 gallons of leachate that leaked into 3 million gallons of storm, storm water. If you do the math, this amounts to a diluted, uh, 1.67% of leachate. Finally, I would ask that the first piece of new business seeking the grant from OSS be passed as an emergency. What we are really acknowledging in this legislation is that the city will commit to the $5,500 of matching funds for the new signage for our parks and airport. Thank you. And I will also have appointments under miscellaneous business tonight.
Great, thank you very much.
And I'd like to introduce Madison Sterns, who is acting as Safety Service Director in Eric's absence, and she's attending the meeting tonight.
Very much. Did you have anything further to report this evening?
No.
All right, uh, the Director of Law had emailed and said she wasn't feeling well, so we'll get her a pass this night, tonight, too. There's stuff going around. And the Director of Finance.
Uh, on your legislation tonight, uh, the, I would request the three reading rule be suspended on the then and now, uh, as required by law. The only challenge with the then and now purchase order is, uh, the ProPhoenix software, uh, purchase order. And it, it's definitely on me because the police chief told me more than once that we had this server coming upgrades that the county, City of Tiffin and City of Fosteria were doing. I did not get it in the budget, so at some point this year, we're probably gonna need some additional appropriations in that line item. We have enough in the line item to definitely get the purchase order paid and the invoice paid, but it's something I should have put in the budget and did not. But so, you may see me coming back sometime later in the year. We're gonna wait till we actually need it before we do that. So we, we do have a, all the other items that are on those then and nows are in the budget. It's just a, a, a timing issue when we're trying to close versus getting, you can't put purchase orders in in 2025 until we close 2024. So there's some things that show up early in January that we cannot get a purchase order in prior to the invoice date. So that's those other items. And I don't know if there were any questions on the work that needs to be done on the MS4 permit. Jameson Bonner here was here last month talking about our MS4 permit and the plans we need to put in place. We had anticipated our project manager, the position that was okayed last year, that we thought we would have filled by now to complete that work for us. That position is not filled. The challenge is those plans need to be submitted by June. I, I, I don't know if it's the end of June or beginning of June, so they need to be completed, and we don't have really time to wait till we fill that project management position. So the dollars were budgeted in project management salary. But now we're going to actually use, uh, independent contractor to do that work. So in essence, what we're doing is appropriating those dollars in other contractual services now. They're not currently budgeted there, they're budgeted in salary, so we need to appropriate it in the right line item.
And the third piece of new businesses isn't appropriating from unappropriated funds, is that something that needs to be suspended as well?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes. Please suspend the three reading rule if we could.
This time we'll move into the public portion of the meeting, and we will start with Deb Tyson.
Deb Tyson, 800 Woodward Avenue, Lot 9. And I missed all the last month because Washington Township has been going with, against Wind Waste. And I just came here to invite you all to February 13th, which is a Thursday, 7 o'clock. The Board of Zoning Appeals is having a meeting. Not quite sure what it's about, but it was in the paper. And that's that. It's at the Firehouse in Arcadia. But I have a letter to the editor that I have really tried to get out there, but I thought I would share, it says, "I thought I would share a little light to help others have an easier way to go to meetings, whether they're board, city, or other. Let's follow protocol to each individual. Meeting group, always ask questions for clarification, ask for an appointment to speak to individuals. Write out whatever you want to say ahead of time. Remember, showing up is the biggest part. Participating in case the public gets to speak is also important. Remember to always be respectful, no matter the topic being discussed." And I wanted to thank all of you on city council and in the administration, the public, everybody that, even on YouTube, because we all are a community and we all bring something different. And I think we all need to remember that. I did wanna point out one little thing. I had some friends fall downtown on the sidewalk. It was uneven and broken. And I don't know enough about, I mean, I'd have to get maps out and find out who, who owns what. But, I mean, if it's part of downtown, I think if nothing else, we could paint something. If it's that broken and it's not getting fixed readily, so that people don't have that issue. And again, I want to invite everybody to Arcadia Firehouse, February 13th at 7:00 PM. They're not gonna just have the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, they're also gonna have a township trustee meeting. It's going to be quite a meeting. And anybody's got questions for me? But I'm gonna publish this in the paper, but I'm not, I'm going, I may wait until March to publish it because I'm trying to get more information about some other things that I haven't put in this editorial. And I wanna make sure that I have accurate information. And I have reached out to even our fire chief.
Thank you, Ms. Tyson. Appreciate it. Uh, we will now open up to members of the public. We ask you to come up and give us your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Cheryl Birch, and I live at 1308 42nd Street in the Manhattan Edition that might as well be New York. Why do I say that? I've lived there over 50 years. I have no streetlights at all on my street. We have no sidewalks at all on our street. And our city is, our water is like this when it's supposed to be like this. I've talked to the water department for years. I'd like to have a driveway, but I won't put one in because about the time I do that, my luck is, they'll come along and tear it out because I've got water lines there. You know, our water backs up when it rains real bad, and my road has actually been closed. I called Tiffin at the Ritz one night and said, "I can't come to be at a rehearsal for the Titanic because I can't get out of my house." They kinda laughed about it until I sent them a picture. And they realized if I had a rowboat, maybe. And the Titanic didn't have any lifeboats. So I guess I drowned that night. It comes into my backyard, too, and that's because whoever put in tile in his field, and I'm a farmer's daughter and I understand. But it comes into our backyards. And we have an open field behind us. So if somebody wants to come out and do a good job at the Manhattan Edition on 42nd Street, you can go from house to house to house to house and have a real heyday. I'm sorry. I love my town. We've got loving people here, but where are they? Because they don't think anybody cares. And they think this is all a bunch of nonsense. And I had to kinda agree one day when someone told me that because I came here repeatedly talking to the water department. I've even come to council and said, "Hey, hey, hey," but nobody listened. I've got a letter from 1973 that I wrote to the water department with the same issues. I am 72 years old. I'd like to have a driveway, I'd like to have streetlights, I'd like to have sidewalks. I see kids walking to school and it's dark out, and they're stumbling, and there's snow. I'm sorry, it's just, it just isn't a good thing. And then we have three different towns, Finley, Tiffin, and Bowling Green. And they talk dirty about Fosteria with all its condemned houses and no industry. We need council and Congress and everybody to get us big industry back. Make us our own county. I don't call, care what you call it. You can call it any name you want. But I'm tired of going to Fust, uh, going to Bowling Green or Finley or Tiffin and seeing how they talk about us and they take our money. Because we don't have a city, we do not have a county state. No seat here. You can't get a license here. You want your driver's license? What county are you from? Well, thank goodness I could go to Hancock and get it, but I happened to be in Finley that day instead of Tiffin. I want my town back. When I moved here, we had a welfare department, we had a lot of things we don't have today. And all they do is talk about how bad we are with drugs. Well, we're a hub people. And they're all using us. They're using us for trafficking and everything else. I love the new stores downtown. I think there's some great things coming in Fosteria, and I'd be the first one to help, but I'm 72 years old, and I'm sorry I've got my hat on, but I just had skin surgery for my skin cancer. I may not be around much longer, and I'm glad my kids aren't living in Fosteria. I only have one. And she's living in Finley. And it's high cost in Finley. But she's got a good job at Whirlpool. I came here allied was here. When I moved my home, I was told, I bought my house, I would have a bus. That very next year, by the time my daughter was old enough to go to school, we had no buses. No sidewalks, no streetlights. Undercode water, water that stinks and smells. My own dog won't drink it. I buy Culligan now, so I have drinking water. I'm sorry, I love the town, but it's about time everybody around here grows up. Man's up, woman's up, and does something. And I've got Doug back, your friend, and I know she's coming and griping and carrying on and talking to you guys and being great because she loves the town, too. Well, I told her I'd come up tonight and be just as, you know, whatever as I could to let you tell how I feel. I love this town. This town is one of the greatest towns. It's got some great people, but we've got to start waking up, growing up, being responsible. I put on a little porch and my real estate taxes went up double. I bought a fixed income. And it's not a very big porch. They came over three times and measured it and told me each time it was bigger. And yet I have a permit from the city, and it was put in by Lowe's, and I know what size it is. Imagine how shocked I was when I found my taxes, it went up twice. And I don't have decent water, I don't have streetlights, I don't have any sidewalks. Come down to 42nd Street, we are in New York City, we might as well be. And high crime without those streetlights. I put in a light when I first bought my house. And people thought it was a streetlight and went it out. When it went out, they came and griped at me. They didn't say, "I'll help you pay for a light bulb," or "We'll go up the ladder because you can't and put it up." It makes me sick when people act like that. We should be neighbors, we should care about each other, and we should grow up. Like I said, man up, woman up, and quit forgetting 42nd Street. Some of you probably don't even know where it's at. I've had people say that to me. Guess what? It's back there. It runs parallel to Stoner and Buckley. All those little town streets back there, Lexington, Fifth, Fifth Street, they all come from, I'm in New York City. Come look me up.
Thank you, Ms. Birch. And I have several others on 42nd Street, so I appreciate the comments.
Oh, you do.
Thank you. All right. We will go, uh, any other public comments? Seeing none, we will move into old business.
In ordinance to accept a proposed agreement for a community reinvestment area tax incentive agreement from National Electric, Electrical Carbon Products, Inc., and authorizing further action thereon and declaring emergency to exist.
That one will remain tabled.
Move to adopt.
We're gonna remain tabled.
No.
That'll remain tabled.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right, next one?
A resolution authorizing the disposal of personal property, motor vehicles, road machinery, equipment, tools, or supplies which are not needed for public use or are obsolete or unfit to be sold by internet, internet auction in calendar year 2025 and declaring emergency to exist.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Lake to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
That passes, it becomes Resolution Number 2025 dash zero three.
What's that number?
Zero three. I'm sorry, zero four. Thank you. Zero four.
In ordinance to authorize, direct, and empower the Director of Finance to enter into an, an administrative agreement with Fosteria Economic Development Corporation of Fosteria, Ohio, concerning the administration and management of the CDBG and UDAG revolving loan funds and declaring emergency to exist.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Baker to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
That carries, it is ordinance number 2025 dash zero five.
In ordinance establishing the position, responsibilities, and qualifications for the position of full-time water treatment plant lead operator for the city of Fosteria, Ohio, and declaring emergency to exist.
That is the second reading of that ordinance.
In ordinance enacting new chapter 946 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fosteria, Ohio, entitled illicit discharge and illegal connection control and declaring emergency to exist.
That is the second reading of that ordinance.
In ordinance enacting new chapter 947 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fosteria, Ohio, entitled erosion and sediment control and declaring emergency to exist.
Be the second reading of that ordinance.
In ordinance enacting new chapter 948 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fosteria, Ohio, entitled comprehensive storm water management and declaring emergency to exist.
That is the second reading of that ordinance.
In ordinance amending chapter 1163 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fosteria, Ohio, entitled required improvements.
That is the second reading of that ordinance.
In ordinance amending chapter 1164 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fosteria, Ohio, entitled storm water facilities relating to reference, relating to reference to new chapter 947.
That was the second reading of that ordinance. That concludes old business this evening. We will move into new business.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and/or safety service director of the city of Fosteria, of the, oh, sorry, let me start again, sorry. A resolution authorizing the mayor and/or safety service director of the city of Fosteria to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ottawa-Sandusky-Seneca County Joint Solid Waste Management District 2025 Competitive Funding Grant Program, and to execute contracts as required and declare an emergency to exist.
Move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions.
Second.
We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Cassidy to suspend a three reading rule. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been waived.
Move to adopt. Second.
We have a motion by Podak, a second by Lake to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
That carries, it becomes Resolution Number 2025 dash zero six.
A resolution approving and ratifying the prior acts of the department heads and safety service director in proving then and now certificates for said expenditures and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions.
Second.
We have a motion by Lehman, a second by Lake to suspend a three reading rule on three separate occasions. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been waived.
Move to adopt. Second.
We have a motion by Cassidy, a second by Baker to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
That carries, it is Resolution Number 2025 dash zero seven.
In ordinance adopting and amending ordinance number 2024-105, permanent 2025 appropriations by appropriating from unappropriated funds in the general fund and capital infru, and, sorry, infrastructure fund and transferring funds from the general fund to the capital infrastructure funds and declaring emergency to exist.
Excuse me. This is a, actually, it's in the storm water fund. This is an error on my part on the terminology. It's not transferring any funds, it's just an appropriation in the storm water fund. So that introductory paragraph is wrong. It was submitted to clerk incorrectly. It should read adopting and amending ordinance 2024 dash 105 by appropriating from unappropriated funds in the storm water fund and declaring an emergency to exist.
Let me repeat the title for you just so we can make sure it's correct before we make a motion. So I have adopting and amending ordinance number 2024 dash 105, permanent 2025 appropriations by appropriating from unappropriated funds in the storm water fund and declaring an emergency to exist.
Correct.
Do we have a motion to accept the reflected change in the title?
Yeah.
Second.
We have a motion by Cassidy, second by Mendoza to accept the change of title stating, again, for the record, adopting and amending ordinance number 2024 dash 105, permanent 2025 appropriations by appropriating from unappropriated funds in the storm water fund and declaring an emergency to exist. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
So the motion carries to change the title of that ordinance that reflects then the same verbiage of the entire ordinance. Nothing else has changed other than the title.
Moved.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions.
Second.
We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Hall to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries, the three reading rule has been waived.
Move to adopt. Second.
All right, we have a motion by Lake, a second by Cassidy to adopt this ordinance. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
That becomes ordinance number 2025 dash zero eight. That concludes the new business. Is there any need to go into executive session this evening? Seeing none, we'll go into miscellaneous business.
Mr. President, I would like to, uh, ask council to appoint Sue Lehman, Eric Kekler, and Greg Cassidy to the Tax Incentive Review Council.
A motion on the floor for, we need to, we need to make a motion.
Sorry?
We need to, we need to approve that, right?
Yes, it needs to be approved by council.
Was there a, a motion?
I move to.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Podak, a second by Lake. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Request has been approved. Any other miscellaneous business this evening?
Yeah, I have a comment to make. I, uh, went out to recycling center today. It's been out there in operation for several months now. And I think that the citizens of Fosteria have been doing an excellent job keeping things policed out there. Everything's orderly, there's not trash laying around. It doesn't look like anybody's doing any illegal or arbitrary dumping of anything out there. And I think our citizens should be commended to support this endeavor the way they have, so.
I'll follow up with that. As a citizen, I really appreciate that it's out there and so convenient and nice to be able to use. I was out there, I think either Saturday or Sunday morning, and it was well-maintained and nice to be able to have.
Any other miscellaneous business this evening?
I just want to thank the city employees. I know the waters and, street department's been doing a great job. The water department has had numerous breaks, and I think they're getting tired, but they keep trudging on and getting the job done, so as a citizen and councilperson, I really appreciate.
So as a citizen and councilperson, I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other miscellaneous business this evening? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move. Second.
We have a motion by Cassidy, a second by Lake to adjourn. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Layman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
They are adjourned at 6:30 PM.